Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, and I am calling this meeting to order. The Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held after the Board adopts tonight's agenda. The Board also asks that you check your cellphones and other electronic devices to be sure that they are turned off or on vibrate in order to avoid disruptions during the meeting. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our work this evening, I would like to recognize that Orange County Schools was established on land previously settled by the ancestors of the Okanichi Band of the Saponi Nation. This Board has made a commitment to honor and respect the heritage of indigenous and all members of our OCS community, to work to undo decades of racial harm, and to build to the best of our ability a community that fosters a sense of belonging for all of our students so that they may thrive and succeed. Please join me now for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Felder, who will have our recognitions this evening.
Thank you and good evening Chair Doyle, Vice Chair Stevens, the entire Board, and to our students, staff, families, and guests. Tonight, we have six recognitions and celebrations. Thursday and Friday of last week, many of us had the privilege to attend one or more or all for the OCS High School commencement ceremonies. Thursday morning at Cedar Ridge High School, Partnership Academy graduated 10 seniors. The ceremony was full of energy and set the stage for the ceremony for the OCS Online Academy, which also occurred at Cedar Ridge High School in the afternoon. While only five seniors folders are on this slide, eight seniors from the OCS Online Academy became the only alumni of the only virtual school ever to exist in Orange County Schools. And while the online academy will not be offered next year, we are so proud to have this class of 2022 represent the school and to mark the end of an era when OCS served families who needed options for educating their children in the midst of a global pandemic. On Friday afternoon and evening, the commencement ceremonies for Orange High School and Cedar Ridge High School respectively were back at the Dean Dome. Prior to the pandemic, it had been tradition for graduates and families to fill the Dean E. Smith Center to celebrate the closing of the chapter of their high school years. And it was great to be back. Three hundred five seniors became alumni of Orange High School this year. Once a panther, always a panther. And 196 seniors turned their tassels to become the class of 2022 Red Wolves alumni of Cedar Ridge High School. Words aren't enough to try to capture the energy and excitement displayed and felt for our graduating classes of 2022. We are indeed so very proud of each individual who received high school diplomas last week. And we are forever grateful to the families and staff who supported them all along the way and helped them reach this unforgettable milestone. We wish them only the best as they take their next steps into the world. And in case you miss them, you can view each event by visiting graduation.orangecountyfirst.com. Again, that's graduation.orangecountyfirst.com where you can find the recordings for each Okay, well, next, we would like to congratulate Coach Chris Walker of Hillsboro Elementary School, who recently was named the North Carolina 2022 Norm Leaf Elementary Teacher of the Year for Physical Education by North Carolina Society of Health and Physical Education. Norm Leaf was an influential educator who worked with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for many years. This award was established in his honor. Coach Walker, who is joining us, will be presented with this award at the annual NC Shape Awards Gala and Reception in October in Winston-Salem. The executive director of NC Shape said, "Being selected as the Norm Leaf Elementary PE Teacher of the Year is the highest honor for a K-5 physical educator." Chris Walker has established himself as an outstanding elementary physical education teacher within Orange County Schools, but not only within Orange County Schools, he has established himself as such in the state. He is a former president, is the former president of the Physical Education Association, and the NC Shape. Coach Walker is well-known across the United States for his exciting and inspirational workshops. Dr. Kim Ballard also wanted to chime in. She is the president of NC Shape, and she said, "Mr. Walker reflects the highest level of professionalism, dedication, and commitment as the state's 2022 Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. This award is a reflection of his leadership, his energy, and love of his students. NC Shape is honored to have such a talented individual representing the 2,600 K-5 elementary schools within our state." Coach Walker will go forward to apply for the Southern District Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. There, he will be up against top professionals from the 13 states in the Southern District. There, he will be up against top professionals from the 13 states in the Southern District. And as the district winner, will advance to, advance to be up against the professionals from the 13 states. Okay, and so, as the district winner, that person will advance to the National Shape America Awards. So congratulations to Coach Walker. We are so proud of him on earning this prestigious accomplishment. And so, he has joined us, I believe his wife is with us, as is his principal, Ms. Christine Crida. So come on down, we want to celebrate you.
So I just want to say thank you to the Board, Dr. Felder, and to my lovely wife, Laura, who's supported me over these years, for having the opportunity to not only present in our school district and for our community and my students, but also I've had the opportunity to probably present all those 13 states and I think seven others. And then, over the last four years, I've been honored to go to Mexico. Prior to the pandemic, I went to Mexico for two years to present in two different cities, Guadalajara and Cretaro. And then I went online the last two years. So just been very fortunate to be surrounded by such great leaders, educators, and a lot of you I've known over the years who've supported me. And I just want to say thank you, and hopefully I can continue to represent our community in Orange County Schools moving forward. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So you know when you meet somebody for the first time, and you have a conversation with them, and you like slowly figure out what they're really passionate about because they get really excited? You know, maybe it's the grandparents showing off the grandbabies, or you know, maybe it's the parents showing off, you know, their child who just graduated, you know, or whatever hobby it is. If you've ever had a conversation with Coach Walker, you realize that that passion is not about him, but it's about you. And it's about his opportunity to learn about you, and that's what he loves. It's all about people because it's health and fitness and wellness, but it is really about people. And he does not hide this talent. He shares it across the state, he shares it across the country, and you heard, he shares it internationally. So I do want you to hear, though, what some of your students said about you. These are quite funny. All right, fifth grader says, "He's really funny, he's really active, and he likes kids." I'm glad. "In class, he will do jokes on you and say funny things, and it's just fun to be in the gym. My favorite thing about his class is his jokes. And if we're running, he runs with you, and he chases you. And then you have to tell him how many jumping jacks you did. And then he'll try and run away from you, and then you have to chase him. He makes us feel special and important. He is my favorite specials teacher, we won't tell the others, because of his energy and how happy he always is and how funny he is. I think he won this award because of how he acts and how sweet he is to everyone, and that he is really good at teaching stuff, because I'm terrible at hockey, and now I'm pretty good. I think he won this award because he has taught a lot of people how to do a lot of great things. I like, I like the words he uses to help encourage you, and how he forgives, and how he listens. Sometimes, he will let us help demonstrate how to play, and it makes you feel really great. In two words, he's kind-hearted. If I could share a personal message, I would say, Coach Walker, you are the best PE teacher that ever existed in this entire universe, and you will always be my favorite PE teacher ever."
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so next, we want to recognize former Cedar Ridge High School senior, now alumni, Carolyn Folks, who won the High School State Championship in the Women's Pole Vault at North Carolina A&amp;T University this year. She also earned the title of Regional Pole Vaulting Champion in Franklinton this year? I believe that's what it's called. And she was named the Field Events Athlete of the Year for the Central 3A Conference. Wow. Carolyn participated in track and field and cross-country for all four years at Cedar Ridge. She plans to attend Appalachian State University in the fall, where she will try out for the cross-country team there. Cedar Ridge High School Director, Athletic Director Andy Simmons said that Caroline has an excellent work ethic. He said Caroline has worked hard to get to where she is. She is an excellent role model for young athletes who want to do well and go on to participate at the collegiate level. She is a model for how much time and effort goes into being a strong athlete. And she gets the job done in the classroom and running track and field. So congratulations, Caroline. We are so proud of you, and we wish you the best as you start a new chapter at Appalachian State. I understand Carolyn is here tonight along with members of her family. There she is. Well, come on down, Carolyn, so we can celebrate you.
Congratulations. Did you want to say a few words?
I want to just say thank you so much for this opportunity. This is a really big honor. Thank you so much.
And you're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Okay, so next, we'd like to recognize Emily Gaddy. Emily Gaddy is athletic trainer at Orange High School, and she was recently named Athletic Trainer of the Year by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. She will be officially presented with the award at their summer clinic in July. The Athletic Trainer of the Year Award was named after Elton Harley, who was a pioneer for athletic training in secondary schools in North Carolina. He worked tirelessly to improve the health and safety of student athletes across North Carolina. This award is meant to highlight athletic trainers who embody the same work ethic and passion for improving student athletes' health and safety. In addition, the North Carolina Athletic Trainers Association celebrated National Athletic Training Month with an event at the North Carolina Museum of History in March 2022. You guessed it, Mrs. Gaddy was a speaker and a panelist for the evening's discussion. And in 2017, Mrs. Gaddy was also one of five finalists for the Training and Conditioning Magazine and School Health's Most Valuable Athletic Trainer Award. Mrs. Gaddy could not be with us tonight. She is on the beach, enjoying a well-deserved vacation with her family. But we want to congratulate her, and I see her principal, Mr. Jason Johnson, is here. So, Mr. Johnson, did you want to come up and laud Ms. Gaddy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope everybody's well. It's nice that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association has acknowledged something that we in Orange County already knew, that we have the best athletic trainer in the state of North Carolina. Ms. Gaddy puts in numerous hours to ensure our student athletes are safe, but not only our student athletes, our opposing team's student athletes are safe. So this is truly an honor that you all are recognizing her tonight. With that said, thank you for supporting our athletic trainers. We need them to keep our student athletes safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, and so next, we want to recognize that on June 19th, 1865, U.S. Major General Gordon Granger issued General Order 3, which informed the people of Texas that all enslaved persons in the state were now free. This day has come to be known as Juneteenth, a combination of June and the 19th. Juneteenth is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating emancipation of enslaved African Americans. It is also often observed for celebrating African-American culture. This year, the federal holiday will be observed on Monday, June 20th, since the 19th falls on a Sunday. And next, we want to celebrate Pride Month. So according to the popular site, awarenessdays.com, Pride Month is celebrated in June because that's when the Stonewall Riots took place way back in 1969. These riots were promoted by a raid that took place during the early morning at the Stonewall Inn in Greenwich Village, Manhattan. The LGBTQ+ community held a series of spontaneous demonstrations to protest against the raid and calling for the establishment of places where LGBTQ+ people could go and be open about their sexual orientation. Pride Month is now a movement that celebrates diversity. For the LGBTQ+ community, it is a way of protesting about discrimination and violence. It promotes their dignity, equal rights, self-affirmation, and is a way of increasing society's awareness of the issues they face. Pride Month is important because we continue to raise awareness, improve the attitudes of society, and encourage inclusiveness among the LGBTQ+ populations. Chair Doyle, that concludes our recognitions and celebrations for this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Felder. Okay, now it is time to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second. Motion from Ms. Smiley, a second from Ms. Mackenzie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And now, it is the time for public comment. After each speaker has been recognized, they will have three minutes to speak. The Board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, nor personal abuse against any person. Any speaker that uses threatening language will not be permitted to continue. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or students are not permissible during public comments. Speakers must conclude their remarks at the end of their three minutes. And we have two people signed up tonight. Our first speaker is Meg Tucker. Welcome, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Meg Tucker, and I'm a proud parent of a rising first grader and a rising kindergartner in Orange County Schools. I stand before you as a concerned citizen and as a representative for nearly 30 parents, grandparents, and citizens of this county to ask for information and to offer our support to the Orange County School Board. I speak on behalf of those standing behind me, a group of neighbors that meets weekly to discuss school safety issues. With the number of mass shootings, and specifically school shootings, on the rise around this country, we can no longer afford to assume that it won't happen here, that it won't happen in our schools, that it won't happen to our children. As a group, we are eager to learn about Orange County Schools' plans for keeping our children and educators safe, so that they may teach and learn in an environment free from fear. We humbly stand before you, offering our support and our assistance in whatever way we can to ensure that the district's plans are up to date and that our teachers and students know what to do if they see anything related to a potential threat, however it presents itself. We do not stand before you lightly, and we do not stand before you advocating for any political party. We stand before you as human beings who are concerned for their children and for teachers. That we must come before you at all brings us here with heavy hearts. But we are also here with a strong sense of purpose and resolve that this county must be prepared. We must do better, and we must advocate fiercely for our children's rights to live and to learn. And so, we humbly ask that you place a high priority on your school board agenda to review and address any gaps in the school board's safety plans, so that Orange County Schools may be a model district moving forward. Specifically, we request that Orange County School Board make a school safety update a permanent agenda item for each school board meeting. In addition, for the next meeting in July, we ask that the Board share their top three concerns for school safety in Orange County, so that we can keep the discussion moving forward. We offer our support to assist you in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tucker. Our second speaker this evening is Ms. Gretchen Schmidt.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Felder. Teachers and staff share that they are expected, and, oh, I wanted to say first, thank you so much for the simplification of the signing up to speak in public comment process. Teachers and staff share that they are expected to keep political talk and political politics, period, out of the school environment and their workspace and the classrooms. And this is a good policy. It has parents at large feel there's no place for it in the school system, and unless we're talking about like a political science class, and in that situation, we're talking about the, the actual system, you know, and how it's supposed to work. This policy is followed by some and not by others. An increasing concern, we hear from teachers, and most recently, around 50 parents, who have been asking, you know, what can we do in the district? Is the political messages from the, from this body seem to be fair game. Most recently, a message to the whole district following this tragedy in Buffalo went from heartfelt expressions of sympathy for individuals whose lives were taken, but then ended in the projection onto the community, onto this school district community, the same horrific qualities that inspired this evil behavior. And we've asked from this podium and emailed a significant number of inquiries from the time that this hate began being spoken of back in October, asking what and where this has been seen and exactly what here in this community inspired such a response that continues to be projected onto the families and the students of the district. Here at this time, we ask again, and knowing there is, there's not a back and forth dialogue here, we would be happy to receive a response to any of the emails that we've sent, or a follow-up to the district letter explaining to the community why the horrific spirit of that individual is projected onto the community. This brings me to the ironic question that has now come up in the way of both the political messages and symbols in the school, and both the resolution against hate. It's not a new phenomenon to have a symbol or an image change over time from the original inspiration of when that symbol came, came to be. The recent mural that's been created and largely on display at Cedar Ridge High School reflects the politicized symbols formerly associated with political lobbying groups, as well as one of the symbols which has been co-opted by actors who have successfully, over time, associated the symbol with hate, as everyone has witnessed over the recent three years, being attributed with billions in damage and the violent attacks against individuals who have sometimes ended in death. We're asking for an inspiration for creativity that's original, that's not commercialized, that's not politicized, to be inspired for the symbol of unity in the school that is actually truly welcoming and doesn't bring up these, these images and this feeling that's been over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Okay, that concludes our public comment. And as was mentioned, we have the paper sign up now, and there's still the written sign up that you can submit till midnight tonight for your comments, written comments to be included with the minutes for the meeting. And at this time, we have Board comments, and I would like to start by just saying that graduations were such an exciting experience of the successful conclusion of the school year. It just felt so wonderful to be with our four groups of high school students, celebrating with them. And with our recognitions tonight, just a real sense of how important physical health and well-being are with Mr. Walker, Ms. Gaddy, and Ms. Folks all being recognized. So really appreciative of that. Nice, Chair Stevens?
Well, I guess it'll sound like ditto, but, you know, I attended the four graduations, graduation ceremonies last week, and warmest congratulations on their well-deserved success. And it was a good feeling to be back in the Dean Dome again. Thank you.
Let's continue to your left, Ms. Mackenzie.
Yes, also, on my list is to congratulate our graduates. Thank you to our families also, and all of our staff members, all of the staff sitting in this room who have worked tirelessly this year to keep our schools open in such a difficult time. As a parent in this district... As a parent in this district, I cannot personally thank you enough. And also, as a board member, you are all truly incredible. Also, wanted to mention Pride Month here and just say that during a time when the rights of our LGBTQ+ students and staff members are under assault, that I really am appreciative of all of our administrators and teachers who help create inclusive and affirming spaces in our schools. Your work is truly saving lives, and I am very grateful.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, so I just wanted to echo the congratulations to our graduates, and thank you to our teachers and school staff and the entire staff for making that happen in what seemed to be an incredibly challenging year, a couple of years. But congratulations and thank you.
Sarah?
I also just wanted to extend my congratulations to everyone on the graduations. I did not remember my tissues, and that was a mistake. But the student speakers in particular, I thought, were awesome. And thanks to all the staff members who helped make it happen because it's quite a big event, logistically.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, me as well. Congratulations to all our graduates. All the ceremonies excellently done, so I appreciate everybody involved in those activities. I also just wanted to take time to thank the Budget Committee for this year, those that had helped set it up, attended, and all the board members that were part of that. I think we had a lot of challenges this year, and glad we were able to focus on a lot of those big challenges.
Dr. Moore?
Graduation was beautiful. I think we all cried at some point during graduation. Congratulations to all the graduates, and thank you to all of our teachers and staff who played a role in the graduations.
Okay. All right, now we're moving on to our consent agenda, and I know there are a few items that folks may want to pull, but just to mention quickly what's on here. We have our minutes. Do we have our minutes? Did they get added? Okay. Okay. We have our personnel report to approve, and the monthly mask-face coverings discussion per Senate Bill 654. There is a change in what is being proposed from the secondary transmission to the following clusters with the Orange County Health Department. Just wanted to note that for everybody. Our budget amendments, the purchase contract for the Stop the Bleed kits, the ninety-day contract extension from the Bud Group Janitorial Services, curriculum instruction contract with branching minds for MTSS teacher support, the school bus fuel purchase contract, and the Durham Tech College Liaison Memorandum of Understanding. So out of those nine items, are there any that board members would like to move to the regular agenda for further discussion? Bonnie?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull the branching minds item.
Will, did you have?
Yes, the Bud Group extension and the fuel purchase contract.
Okay. And so, I'm just wondering when we should... Dr. Felder, do you have an opinion about when you want us to add those into the regular part of the agenda?
Probably, I would recommend maybe before the policy discussion.
Okay.
Could that be a good place?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt tonight's revised consent agenda?
Still moved?
Second.
A motion from Ms. Mackenzie, a second from Ms. Hauser, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Our first discussion action item is a Pride Month resolution. And I want to express my appreciation to Ms. Mackenzie for all her work in drafting that. And I don't want to say too much because a lot of it's in there, but it's just a really important resolution that I'm glad you brought forward, and the significance of it is incorporated in the resolution itself. So pass to you.
Thank you. Resolution honoring Pride Month and celebrating LGBTQ+ students, staff, and community members. Whereas, the Orange County Board of Education acknowledges the dignity and worth of all students and employees and strives to create a safe, caring, and responsive school environment to facilitate student learning and achievement. And whereas, the board prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or age. And as noted in Policy 1710, the board will not tolerate any form of discrimination, harassment, or bullying in any of its educational or employment activities or programs. And whereas, OCS Gender Support Guidelines state that OCS staff play an essential role in creating a supportive school culture and advocating for the well-being of all students, it is important for school staff, students, and parents to be aware that transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming students may be at a higher risk for peer ostracism, victimization, and bullying because of bias and/or the possibility of misunderstanding and lack of knowledge about their lives. Schools must be proactive in creating a school culture that respects and values all students and fosters an understanding of gender identity and expression within the school community. And whereas, June 2022 marks the fifty-second anniversary of the first Pride Parade, which came one year after the Stonewall uprising of 1969, which was six nights of riots led by transgender women of color like Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, sparked when LGBTQ+ people resisted police harassment and brutality during an early morning bar raid. It was a historic moment that served as a catalyst for the LGBTQ rights movement in the United States and around the world. And whereas, the decades since have been one of struggle and celebration for the LGBTQ+ community, despite increased support and acceptance, LGBTQ+ young people still face many challenges. For example, without accepting families, they are more likely to experience homelessness and nearly five times more likely to attempt suicide. And whereas, more than three hundred anti-LGBTQ+ bills have been proposed in 2022 throughout the United States, including bills that would limit representation of gender diverse and LGBTQ+ people in the curriculum in schools, access to medical care, and participation in sports. And whereas, the Trevor Project reports that eighty-five percent of transgender and non-binary youth say that recent debates around anti-trans bills have negatively impacted their mental health. And whereas, the Trevor Project National Survey on LGBTQ+ Youth Mental Health in 2021 reported that seventy-five percent of LGBTQ+ youth had experienced discrimination based on their sexual orientation or gender identity at least once in their lifetime, and over half had expressed, had experienced this form of discrimination in the past year. And whereas, LGBTQ+ people in the United States face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness in the United States. And whereas, Cornell University's We Know, What We Know Project found that LGBTQ+ people of color face disproportionately higher rates of discrimination in the workplace and community at large, exceeding discrimination experienced by both white LGBTQ+ people and by straight people of color. And whereas, the Orange County School Board appreciates the many contributions made by lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer students, staff, families, and community members to the vibrancy of the broader school community. And whereas, it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Orange County School Board does hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Orange County schools, and be it further resolved that the Orange County School Board commits to working with LGBTQ+ students, families, staff, and community members to build safe and equitable schools where all students, families, and staff members are valued for who they are and where diversity is celebrated. And be it further resolved that the Orange County School Board encourages central services and administrators to support educators across grade levels and content areas to acknowledge and celebrate LGBTQ+ Pride Month each June. And be it further resolved that the Orange County School Board urges all students, staff, and community members to respect and honor our diverse community and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity not only during LGBTQ+ Pride Month, but during the other eleven months of the year as well.
Thank you, Hillary.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any comments before I take a motion to approve this resolution? Sarah?
I'd just like to say thanks to Ms. Mackenzie for drafting the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well done.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Ms. Smiley, a second from Mr. Atherton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Thank you so much, Hillary. You've done a tremendous amount of work.
Thanks for supporting it, everyone.
Okay. We now are moving on to our work session, which is just one information item. Dr. Felder?
Indeed, we have one information item. However, Chair Doyle, would it be possible to move the Curriculum Instruction Contract with Branching Minds for MTSS Teacher Support up on the agenda?
Yes.
Ms. Ware, our MTSS director is here with her two children and...
Oh.
Perhaps I didn't realize. Ah, I saw the children and I saw her, but I didn't realize she was here just in case we needed to speak to this item, so. And they're doing such a great job.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Okay.
Just got them in the door right now.
This is a good time?
Okay. I'll move to move that agenda item for the branching minds up to... Are we going to do that right now?
Let's do it now.
Can we do it now?
Let's do it now.
Next on the agenda.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Mackenzie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Great.
Welcome.
Really well, but we may be reaching the end of that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, Ms. Meyer, thank you so much. This is actually, this is questions I'm getting from the community, so I just wanted to relay them. They wanted to just understand more about the contract. I understand it's something we were looking at a couple of years ago. And so, the information that goes into branching minds, does that go from an electronic system or is that going to create an additional work burden on our teachers? That was one question. Will it include, second question is, will it include the AIG assessments? And third, is the data in it protected or will we be sharing it with the vendor to use in blind data analysis?
So those are great questions. I can answer the first one quickly. Branching Minds is a platform that has the vast majority of their data auto-fed. So it is considered like an automated, automated batch import. And so, it essentially picks up that data and feeds it in. There are, as I turn to Ryan Miller, in case I'm the speaking, there are a few things that our team at the central office level may need to do some data kind of preparation for that to be picked up. However, that will all live with us at central office. We will not be asking teachers to hand input data. That's not a good use of their time.
Right. Right. And what about, you know, because in addition to the MTSS measures, will it include any of the AIG assessments?
So we can do some of those assessments. Those would be ones that we would most definitely have to prepare because of the nature of the assessment. And some of them, honestly, we still score by hand, so that makes it difficult. That can be done. We will need to work with the vendor to talk through what that may look like. In addition, to look at what the plans that are generated may look like that we could adapt for our AIG students. So that's something I can check on.
Okay, and we could, I could see what the parent wants to do. And finally, the data, is the data, how is the data protected? And how is the privacy protected is really the essence of the question.
So we have looked through their data processes. Ryan Miller has talked with them to ensure that, like with all of our vendors that have access to student data, that they are meeting our requirements for student privacy. And so, that, of course, is part of that contract. This is an internal tool, so this will not be something that will be parent or community-facing, and the data will be protected, like all of our other data sources, like Power School and Ames Web and Dibbles. The same contract applies for student privacy.
Okay, great. So, okay, that's helpful. I don't have any other questions.
I can probably clarify as far as their data privacy. They have a data privacy policy. So it's, each company has its own, they are different policies, but Branching Minds does have one.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, Sarah?
This is a question, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this well. So something that we talked about in the Student Achievement Committee earlier this year as we were looking at some student assessment data was how incredibly manual it was for teachers, administrators, for us as the board to look at each of these pieces of data. And so, part of what I'm guessing is here is that this is going to improve that process, right? So that like the data analysis at the school level or classroom level or like even the student level, right, of these different sources, that we're going to be able to, it's going to up our ability to analyze this data. Is that, it's solving that problem?
Yes, and Branching Minds is a platform that allows us to take, just like you said, multiple data points. And we actually have some ability to change the thresholds for risk within the platform. And so, we can do that based on local norms, we can do that with any number of variables. And then with that, we're able to take those multiple data sets, and we're able to really drill down to groups of students who are at specific risk levels all the way down to individual students, so we can ensure that we are able to identify their need accurately and then make a decision as a team how we are going to meet that need. So what supports we'll put in place. And that will go all the way from core, which is, you know, what we talk about a lot, that core instruction is our first and best defense. And so, we will be able to look at core data as well. So we'll be able to look at grade levels. We could look at the whole fifth grade across Orange County schools. We'll have that option as well. And then we can go, like you said, all the way down to class. We can go to small groups of students, we can create custom groups, and we can look at students individually as well. So it's a very powerful platform. It does a lot of that kind of data mining for us, which really allows us the time to work with the data and determine instructional goals and next steps, and then work with our students.
And so, when you say "us," you mean like a teacher too, right? Like, once we all, once everybody knows how to use this, it might save some time, actually, so you're not needing to log into these multiple places.
Yes, ma'am. And it will be extremely helpful when we're having parent conferences, when we're having conversations about what support students may need with their parents and guardians. We will have everything in one place in a way that will be very clear and concise.
That's awesome.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Great.
I'm sorry, I think...
Go ahead, Will.
I did have one question. On the cost aspect of it, I do see it's fifty-seven this year, but then it talks about annually, there'll be a three hundred per school and then a per pupil license fee. Is that included in the fifty-seven? So we're expecting it to be fifty-seven per year, or is it going to jump up?
It will be lower.
Okay.
Optimistically, the next several years, because in that quote that you're seeing, there is also professional development. And so, once we have trained the majority of our school-based teams, our central office staff, and we begin the implementation, we would not then need to have that same level of professional development in future contracts.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Again, motion to approve? Motion from Ms. Hauser.
Second.
Second from Ms. Mackenzie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all so much for your support of MTSS and...
Your family.
Our little family as well. We appreciate it.
And they're waving at us, waving back at them. She was waving at us with her heart.
All right. And so, Dr. Felder, I think we're going to keep the other items till before the policy item, and so now it's time for our work session item.
Yes, and so, Orange County Schools is so super duper excited to challenge all students in grades K to eight to a game of Booknopoly. Bookopoly, there we go. I keep throwing it in in there, which is our summer reading challenge. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Denise Green, our new chief academic officer, to tell us about our summer reading challenge.
Welcome, Dr. Green. We enjoyed all the graduation festivities with you.
Thank you.
Get me all hooked up here. Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman Doyle and Vice Chairman Stevens, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Felder. I am very excited to be here this evening and very excited to be a member of the Orange County family and also excited to have members of my team here. Thank you, team, for being a part of this evening. And they gave me the easy... And they gave me the easy job. They said I could come and talk about an exciting reading program this evening. The Bookopoly, a take on Monopoly. And except that you don't have to go to jail. You get to go to the library. It's exciting.
That's cute.
Well, I know you have your game board, right? Well, this is our summer reading program. And our summer reading program is not only to challenge our students K-8 in the Summer Scholars and the Read to Achieve program, but it's also to challenge all of our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. We challenge you to not only read your favorite book, whether it's the latest John Grissom book, which is a series of short stories, which by the way, do you know that he starts a book every January 1st with a goal of finishing the book by July 1st?
Wow.
See, if you read, you know that piece, right? Or if you're going to read, and as an adult, my favorite section of the bookstore is the children's book section. I find that the children's books find many wonderful stories as well as new learning. So pick up the latest books in the children's books. So we do challenge our students and our adults to read this summer. As you read, check out hashtag OCS Read. Please place your reading books there, because we want to challenge our community to see how many books we are reading as we challenge our students. When the students return, please make sure that they turn in their Bookopoly. To their teacher, we have prizes for every student who completes their chart. And also, we have big prizes for students, for all the students who complete every round. Bigger prizes that they will be able to submit and have a chance to win. Got your books ready? Got your hashtags all set? You're going to go to the library and not to jail.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one, I have one question. Have we shared this with the Orange County Library, so they're prepared and maybe have the board up and...
All those boards and all things, we will make sure they have them.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
I was curious with the food for the summer program that we're running, are the boards going out and our books going out with our, with the meals? When we bring the meals out to the community centers and other places?
That's a great question. I don't know, but it would be one thing that we will research.
Thank you.
Because we want to make sure that all our communities are aware.
Other questions? Hillary?
I just wanted to say thank you for this program. I think that this is exciting to have something the whole district is doing, and that my kids who are in different grades can do sort of, not that they're reading the same books, but do together, and something the whole family can talk about.
Absolutely.
My husband and I are doing it with them and reading our own books. And they've already asked to go to the library twice, so that is twice more than at this point last summer, so thank you.
Great. I hope to get into some book talks with some of you right here. And so if you're reading the John Grissom book, join me.
Several squares you could count that in. I'm curious, later tell me where you decided to put that on your game board.
What the prizes, we really want to know what the prizes are.
They will not tell me.
Well, my kids told me to ask, so I'm glad she did.
The prizes. Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Now we have quite a few items coming up for a vote in our Discussion and Action section. And I'll pass it back to you, Dr. Felder, and I believe we're going to hear from Mr. Oboli as well.
You got it. Thank you, Chair Doyle. Absolutely, yes. So Mr. Patrick Oboli, our Deputy Superintendent Operations, has the next four items. And that would be school calendar revisions for the 2022-2023 school year, a bell time update for 2022-2023 school year, limited spot reassignment to Cedar Ridge High School for new developments, and activity bus driver incentive pay programs. Mr. Oboli, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. So we'll go ahead and get started here. School calendar revisions. The board may recall earlier this spring, you passed calendars, the academic calendars for students and staff, the 2022-2023 school year. We're back tonight asking for minor revisions to those calendars. And I'll outline within each of the calendars, we have a traditional school calendar, and then we also have a year-round calendar that impacts Hillsborough Elementary School, our only year-round school within the district. We'll start with our traditional school calendar revisions. You'll see some general themes. I won't read everything that's on the slide to you about how, and days that are moving, but I'll certainly make sure you're well-informed. So first and foremost, as we experienced with the primaries this year, several of our schools are polling locations and voting locations. And looking at future years and the elections, and based on anticipated voter turnout, currently four of our sites are slated, but there could be additional need within the community in future years for voting locations on school campuses. And we do know when school is in session, that creates an impact to the school operations and can present a safety concern and challenge. We did work for some time with the Board of Elections, local law enforcement. We also hired and had staff on-site from a security agency and made sure that we put plans in place for that day. Some of those were seen, some of those were not so obvious. But wanted to recognize just the concerns from staff and the public with schools being open on such a monumental day for our country when individuals go out to express their right to vote. And we know that individuals are authorized and allowed to be within 50 feet of a voting location of the polling sites, based on state law as well. And that also can create some concerns as we have school in operation, and we always can visually separate students in classrooms from where those locations are. And so the first change on the calendar is to make November 8th, 2022, this upcoming November, which is the voting day, polling day in our schools, to make it a teacher work day. I would further recognize on our calendars that the superintendent have the authority to make that a work-from-home, a remote work day. And that just lessens the amount of staff that's in our building. We did that in a previous district I was in, and that worked well, limiting the number of cars or individuals on a campus, except for those that would be required to be there, which are typical of our custodians. And so the first change on the traditional calendar is moving the October 31st Teacher Work Day to November 8th. And November or October 31st would become the Student Day. And so there's not any adjustments to the instructional hours for the year for that. The second change, as we implemented our calendar revisions, we wanted to make sure we had a clear notations within both calendars as to what days would be implement, whether make-up days for next year. That is part of the calendar process. And so when we looked at possible teacher workdays on schedule that could be used for inclement weather make-up days, January 23rd on the calendar was a required teacher work day, and January 24th was an optional teacher work day. And if we had to use the optional teacher work day, it would create a situation where students would possibly come back to school on a Monday and then be out the next day. And so we just wanted to swap the required teacher work day for the optional teacher work day that keeps that long weekend together, should we have to use the optional teacher work day as a student day. And again, there was no net changes to the amount of time on the calendars for that switch. And again, these changes were reviewed, and we met with the Calendar Committee just to kind of update them and to get feedback on possible days to use. The third change to the calendars, to just clarify that the last day of school, June 9th, for the traditional calendar, will be an early dismissal. And that will be a three-hour early dismissal without parents trying to figure out, is it 11 o'clock, 11:15, 11:30, 12:30, 1 o'clock? It's just three hours. And so they can just backtrack from the bell schedule, the ending time, three hours. And that will be consistent at all of our campuses as to the early dismissal time. And then again, the weather make-up days, so right now on our calendars, as we discussed at length, when you approve the calendars, there's 174 student days in the calendar for next year. There's six hours of instructional time that we built onto the calendar. So 174 days, that's six hours of instruction equals 1,044 instructional hours. We're required by law to have 1,025 instructional hours. That gave us a bank of 19 hours of time that we could use for inclement weather. Now remember, this top bullet right here, we just took three hours of that away because we're no longer now in school for the six hours, the last day of school, it's three. So we're down to 16 hours of bank time. We propose the first day that is missed for inclement weather, there would not be any make-up. We'll use six of the banked hours. For the second day, there would be no banked, or no make-up. We would use banked hours. The third day, as mentioned, we would use the optional teacher work day on January 24th, the optional teacher work day on March 24th, and the teacher work day on May 5th. And then that leaves four additional hours in the bank that we could use for school delays as needed during the next school year. We're only showing five days on the weather make-up calendar. There certainly are other workdays that are possible, or possibilities to be used, but with having a tremendous amount of professional development and staff activities already planned on those days, we didn't want to pull that or put those on the inclement weather plan. But we recognize, once we exhaust five days, we would be back. The superintendent would need to present a plan on how we would make sure we meet the 1,025 instructional hours for next school year. Questions regarding the calendar revisions? And you also have the full calendars within the packet online.
Sarah?
This isn't a question. Thank you for making the shift on Election Day. I'm very, very glad that you did that. A couple of, just a note on the family-facing version of this calendar. I think that there are, there are like some small things in here that can be confusing for families. So optional teacher work day versus required, it's, I think, in the family-facing version, we should just like not make that distinction. But like teacher workday is no school for students, like just the clearer we can be about like when students need to be there or not, better.
We will, and we absolutely do. On the public-facing documents, what's in your packet tonight is just the combination of a calendar for both students and staff, because one impacts the other when we're talking about a Student Day or Teacher Work Day. But you're absolutely correct. When the documents are uploaded after this evening, based on your approval, then there is a completely separate document for staff from students. It's very clear about, it's just a Student Day off, and they don't have to get into whether it's an optional or required teacher work day. What we do want them to make sure is they know that, you know, there are these inclement weather days that are designated. And so if we have inclement weather, those could be days that, you know, end up being school days down the road.
We might need a little bit of language around that, since it's been so long since we've, I think we used to have a little bit more of a bank, maybe, than we have right now.
We did have, you're correct. So we did have more instructional days. And as was discussed through the calendar process, and the feedback was to provide more time for professional development, professional learning next year, allow students an opportunity to recover and learn, and, you know, really to make sure that the focus is on academic achievement, but teachers needing the professional development to do that, especially as we emphasize data and assessment and MTSS and practices, letters you heard quite a bit about the last few months, that teachers have that time for the professional development to ensure they have rigorous and high academic standards within the lesson plans. So as we think about kind of moving forward, we certainly will address that and make sure that we're covering that in the plans.
Other board member questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
From Ms. McKenzie, a second from Mr. Atherton.
And I'll now present the year-round calendar revisions for approval. So again, the same thing. We did one item. We did adjust the quarter three, just so we added instructional day by making the shifts. February 3rd, the optional teacher work day becomes a Student Day. That work day moves to November 8th. We did change December 16th to an optional teacher work day, so students would be in school the entire week in order to provide additional work day in May 8th that could be used for inclement weather. There was no loss to the scheduled teacher workdays on that switch. Last day of school for them is scheduled right now for June 7th, early dismissal. Because they do end their school year on June 7th, they do have an opportunity for additional inclement weather make-up days after June 7th. But remember, the calendar law requires us to be out by the Friday closest to June 11th. And so their inclement weather plan would be day one, no make-up, bank six hours. Day two, no make-up, bank six hours. May 8th, June 8th, and then May 5th. And the reason the inclement weather days seem a little bit out of order is because we take advantage of the extra day at the school year we can use. And it puts May 5th on both the traditional schedule and the year-round schedule as the fifth day for inclement weather make-up. And the reason we did that right now, that's a combined day on both calendars, where there is scheduled professional development, both for traditional teachers and year-round teachers. And we didn't want to take a work day for professional development, have one school being in session and the other school being out because of inclement weather. And so that's why it seems a little out of order there. But it was done on purpose so that day five equals May 5th on both make-up plans.
I have a question, just in general. Do we know, and if you were Dr. Felder, no, is there going to be any inclement weather remote? Like you can have, you know, if we have five days that we need canceled because of inclement weather, do we end up having two that we could be virtual days?
There is not. They actually, within the law, very specifically stated that that is rescinded, that section of the law effective June 30th, 2022. So school districts no longer have that option.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is the last day at Hillsborough Elementary School a half-day as well?
It is, yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Ms. McKenzie, a second from Vice Chair Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you so much, Mr. Oboli.
All right, thank you. So the next item we've discussed a couple of times now is to propose school bell times with adjustments for next school year. Obviously, number one priority is ensuring all students arrive safely and on time to schools each day. We did work through a couple of feedback cycles with district administration and school principals on proposed bell times and looking at what would best serve our students with the instructional day and how we're accounting for students' minutes within the school day. One item of note is as we present the bell times on the slide for the proposed bell times, that is the start of the instructional day and the end of the instructional day. So students pack up and start leaving the classroom after the instructional day ends when those bell rings. And so we also would say to our parents and the public, you know, it is very important. And one of the items we'll be addressing with communication to parents over the summer, and as Hillsborough starts back here shortly, is how critical it is for students to arrive by car, just like we're addressing students coming in late by bus. It's critically important students who come by carpool each day are at school on time so that they are in their classrooms, ready to begin instruction when the bell rings. We have started the process for developing a survey. We have not been able to launch that survey at this point in time. So certainly the board can adopt the recommendations this evening, or we can bring this back on the 27th. Our focus the last several weeks, as you know, has been on safety initiatives and other initiatives at the end of the school year. And so we're still working to get a survey launched. We still feel it's essential we get staff and parent feedback, not only about with the proposed bell times, but also some of the information within our calendar. Our Calendar Committee will be meeting in the fall, and we want to go ahead and start the process early for adopting calendars. And as I mentioned previously in our meetings, school bell times and school calendars go hand in hand as we look at the instructional minutes, the instructional time, and what we're accomplishing with the students. But I did want to recognize I had spoken in reference to conducting a survey, and I wanted you to know that that had not been launched at this time.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Oboli?
I just want to know how the principals are reacting to the shortened school day.
So positive so far, from what I've heard. Certainly the... Certainly the middle schools liked having the additional time. They, they lost some, some time that they had set aside for meetings with individual students when the school day, but they have adjusted to that. High schools, certainly you've heard feedback previously about not ending the school day at 4:15 PM. And elementary school is approximately the same, although it looks as if they've lost 20 minutes. What we found was the practice of students packing up and starting and leaving the instructional day happened much earlier than the 2:50 PM posted time. And so we have clarified 2:30 is the ending time. So their instructional day really does mirror maybe five minutes difference than before. The middle schools have adjusted to their plans to be able to meet with their students as they anticipated. And again, we had very robust conversations with the instructional day being six hours and then the schools being consistent, looks like, you know, about a seven-hour daily time that students would be on campus because of those non-instructional times, like the eating of meals and the passing periods or passing time between periods don't count in instructional, do not count in instructional time.
Other questions? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Vice Chair Stevens and a second from Ms. McKenzie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Just one clarity. How are we communicating this to the families?
So, well, one, it'll go out automatically tomorrow with Board Matters. We always send out Board Matters with the Communications Department the day after a board meeting. Secondly, when we send information out with the survey that we're still doing, we're still communicating, we'll have that out. Obviously, Hillsborough Elementary School is the first impacted, and so we'll be working with the principal for direct communication for all of their families as well. And staff will be notified tomorrow as well so that they receive that.
It'll go through our texting system as well?
We have the ability to send by text, email, and phone calls, so we can, we can start the trio out of communication.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is the limited spot reassignment. We discussed new housing developments in Western Orange County. Ms. Mao could not be with us this evening, and so just wanted to, again, bring us back to what we had discussed because of the future growth and anticipated growth of new housing developments that are currently slated to attend Orange High School, but Orange High School is projected to continue to be overcrowded for next year. It's already been closed to transfers at this point in time. We brought to you maps, and we looked at both our capacity within the schools, our future projections, and a plan that would allow for some limited spot reassignment of new developments. This primarily impacts students, as you see on the screen, from these subdivisions. Zero students are currently enrolled because some of these have not come online at this point in time. We do have a few students from the Havenstone community and one other community, I believe, that are already in the schools. And so what we would recommend is those students would move over to our student transfer process where they would be grandfathered in to that school. And any rising sibling coming in, we would provide transportation to them through next school year. And a couple of the students are already attending Cedar Ridge High School, so that's why it's zero with an asterisk. There wouldn't be any impact to them because they're already attending Cedar Ridge High School. So we, those 10 families, we will be reaching out to them, helping them understand and explain what this means and their options for either continuing at Orange High School or moving over to Cedar Ridge High School. And then we would provide bus transportation to all of these zones to Cedar Ridge High School because that would be their school of assignment. And so our recommendation this evening is to move forward as presented with the limited spot reassignment of these developments for the, starting with the 2022-2023 school year.
Any questions for Mr. Abely?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Ms. McKenzie, a second from Vice Chair Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
All right, next item up is activity bus driver incentive pay programs. When we brought back a couple of months ago incentive programs for our bus drivers for the 2022-2023 school year, including retention and other bonuses. It was mentioned by the board and about that night in our discussion about activity bus drivers, and we said we would bring that back. And so this evening, I have Mr. Dwayne Foster, our Director of Athletics, School Health and Operations, and Mr. Larry Albert, our Director of Transportation. Both of them will walk you through the proposals because we have activity buses that cross over multiple areas. And so what we tried to do in our presentation and our proposal this evening is be equitable across the programs because we know when we say activity bus driver, it involves multiple areas and has different meanings. So gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Abely. Good evening, Chair Doyle, Vice Chair Stevens, the board, Dr. Felder, and all in attendance. Today, we would like to present the establishment of a driver incentive program for our coaches and, and activity bus drivers. We believe this incentive program will, will do two things. One, it will increase our, our pool of drivers as well as get our athletic coaches that drive, as well as our non-activity, non-athletic bus drivers in alignment together. We understand that a, a, it's a major need for a pool of drivers, and, and we feel that this incentive will increase that pool in, in several ways. And, and again, ultimately get those two groups in alignment with each other as it relates to incentive and pay for the most part. I'll begin first with our coaches. Currently, our, our, our coaches that drive are not compensated during the end season to drive buses. They receive a coaching stipend, but they're not, do not receive a stipend for driving during the end season. During the off-season, if I'm a coach, I can go and drive and receive an hourly pay during the off-season, but the end season, I don't, I do not receive anything. So we present an opportunity for coaches during the end season to receive a $250 incentive for every five trips during the end season. All right? So end season, as a coach, we will ensure that a designated driver is assigned, whether I'm the head coach, or if I'm a head coach that doesn't have a CDL, we then move to the assistant coach. If that assistant coach has a CDL and, and wants to drive, they'll have the opportunity to receive that incentive, or even a manager for that matter. All right? And that will occur during the end season. During the off-season, well, let me take a step back. If in fact, there's a coach, you know, certainly at this point that has a CDL and, and, and is the head coach or an assistant coach, they in essence do not have to drive their own team. So we have to bring in a driver that we pay, obviously, to drive the team. All right? So we really believe that it will encourage coaches that do already have their CDLs to go ahead and drive so they can get this incentive as well, and encourage coaches that do not currently have a CDL to go on a table, all right, to, to kind of get in alignment with potentially receiving the stipend for after-five trips. We then move to the off-season or non-activity bus driver who typically or normally see us receive their hourly pay. These coaches, I'm sorry, individuals would also receive the $250 incentive for every five trips. All right? We did make a note that, let's just say you drove three trips for athletic purposes and two trips for non-athletic purposes, that, you know, it will combine for your five in that way as well. But it both gets this opportunity, the incentive to put coaches in alignment with each other. And again, really believe that it will include, include and improve a bus pool of coaches that will decide to say, hey, I'm in season, I might go ahead and drive, considering that I'll be able to get this stipend here for the most part. I'll go to that final slide there. I think I already made the point about the non-athletic school trips and, and the like. These drivers also, again, would be included into that $250 incentive for every five trips.
Any questions for Mr. Foster or Mr. Albert? Sarah?
Just one, I'm glad we're looking at this. One specific scenario I was curious about, so field trips. Let's say I'm a coach who's a teacher, I have my CDL, I might normally, you know, drive the bus with my athletic team. I'm presuming like if your class is going on a field trip, you need to be like on the bus but not driving the bus during that field trip. Is that? Like if you're a classroom teacher and you're managing your classroom, I, I don't think you should like, that's a scenario where we would want to let that individual also drive the bus while their class is going on their field trip.
Thank you for that question. As a principal, when you send children on a field trip, there's multiple adults. I would, it would be very similar to when a teacher or teacher assistant, and we would have teacher assistants driving buses, there would still be the teacher on the bus. None of the incentive programs will put students at risk or trips at risk. We would make sure that with the other adults, the teachers, other individuals, they would, they would have monitors or individuals on the bus with them for, for the trip and the, and the, the safety of the individual. So certainly, we could have folks who volunteer to do that, but if the board feels that they need to be excluded, then we certainly would say, you know, you're excluded if it is your, your class that's on the trip. We did talk about coaches and coaches driving their teams, and that is something that is a routine practice, and that, that is something they have to do most times out of necessity because they can't find drivers. And, but every coach knows that if they're, can't drive, I mean, some games are physically exhausting. I was a coach, I did rec league too, and, you know, sometimes you're just, you're not able to drive after a game, then, you know, there's plans to handle that and account for that as well. But no driver should ever be in a seat that's not comfortable and ready to take on that task. But I, I don't see that with the field trips that we would run into too many scenarios with our CDL drivers just because of the number of TAs or individuals who have a CDL that are licensed teachers is pretty small.
Okay, so there would be a, there would be another adult in this scenario if, if the teacher were.
Oh yeah, there, there would, should never be a situation where the only individual who is the adult on a trip is the one behind the seat of the bus.
That is the only thing I wanted to make sure was not going to happen, so.
I'm happy to put that in policy and regulate, or procedures and regulations.
Thank you.
I have a question, just a point of clarification for myself. So, so if I'm a basketball coach and I'm driving my team, I'm really only compensated through my coaching stipend. I don't get additional money normally, but this every fifth trip, then I would get that $2.50. Whereas if I'm not a basketball coach right now, I'm in some other sport, but I come to help out the basketball team by driving, I do get the hourly wage for driving right now, and then I get the fifth trip, $2.50. What, could you remind us what the hourly wage is for our best drivers?
$14.25 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Atherton and a second from Vice Chair Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank y'all. Thanks. Okay.
Okay, so next on the agenda for tonight will be beginning teacher support program and a staffing request. And so this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Chris Gammon, Executive Director for Curriculum Instruction, and Ms. Connie Brimmer, Director of Human Capital, to the podium as they're coming up. Just want to note what we know research and best practice state and are very clear, and that is that not only do teacher mentoring programs build teacher capacity, they promote retention and increase job satisfaction, but they also have a program, teacher mentoring programs have a positive effect on student achievement and engagement. And so again, Ms. Brimmer and Dr. Gammon will share how the district endeavors to strengthen our teacher mentoring program and also support teachers who are pursuing their National Board certification. Ms. Brimmer and Dr. Gammon.
Welcome.
Good evening, Orange County School Board. First, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss. Sorry, I always think I have my teacher voice.
That's better.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss beginning teacher support. It has always been crucial in, in recruiting, retaining, and building the skills of our novice teachers. This is especially evident during the pandemic as teachers across our nation, state, and our district has been, have been forced to navigate new challenges. Many of our teachers in years one through three are now arriving at teaching through alternative options and did not come through a traditional teacher education program. Those who did come through a traditional teacher education program may not have had a traditional student teaching experience or intern experience due to remote teaching and school closures. All of these factors have made it critically important that we evaluate how to support our newest teachers to ensure they have the skills necessary to meet the needs of all of our students and the competence to remain in the profession long-term. As you know, goal three of the Orange County Strategic Plan is to recruit, hire, support, and retain culturally proficient and highly qualified staff committed, committed to providing all students with the excellent education and a welcoming environment. In addition, the goal outlines that by 2026, the Orange County students' teacher turnover rate will, will decrease to at or below the state average. According to the National Association of Educators, approximately 50% of teachers are leaving the profession after five years. Moreover, teachers cite the same reason for staying in the profession as they do leaving the profession. It's either the support or the lack thereof from their colleagues and administrators. Beginning teacher support programs play a significant role in providing this support. It is not enough to retain our novice teachers. We must also ensure that they have the skills necessary to provide positive impact on student achievement. Teacher experience is directly correlated with the teacher's ability to improve performance of students. Novice teachers are still developing the tools required to meet the demands of the classroom. Effective and intentional mentoring programs not only increase job satisfaction of novice teachers, it helps grow our novice teachers into leaders and has positive effects on student achievement and student engagement. Orange County's data, much like the nation, has shown a steadily, a steady increase of novice teachers since the 2018-2019 school year. Approximately 16% of all Orange County teachers in 2021-22 have between zero and three years of experience. This year, Orange County has 84 beginning teachers, which is the largest cohort in four years. To date, we have hired 18 beginning teachers for the 2022-23 school year. The shortage of qualified teachers across the U.S. has contributed to the popularity of alternative certification programs. That's what you might know as lateral entry. Alternative licensure programs allow teachers to enter the classroom without having completed the educational coursework of a traditional teacher education program. These programs assume that individuals have the content area to teach, but they lack the methods classes taken in a traditional education program. Alternative licensed individuals have to take the educational coursework during a three-year timeframe after entering the classroom. The number of alternative licensure employees in Orange County has seen, has drastically increased over the past four years from making up about 26% of our BT population in 2018-19 to now making up 44% of our beginning teacher population in 2021-22. These individuals are entering the classroom with no teaching experience and need intensive support and supervision to be successful. Another data point for beginning teachers is retention rates. Retention is defined by the state as being on the payroll in March of one year, but not on the payroll in March of the following year. As you can see, the retention rates for beginning teachers in their first year hovers around 90%. It is noteworthy that in our current model of service, beginning teachers in their first year only, only beginning teachers in their first year receive intensive coaching support from the North Carolina New Teacher Support Program via collaboration with UNC Chapel Hill. This program is a comprehensive, university-based induction program, offering a research-based curriculum and multiple services designed to increase teacher effectiveness, enhance skills, and reduce attrition among beginning teachers. The North Carolina New Teacher Support Program provides The North Carolina New Teacher Support Program provides each teacher with one, the opportunity to attend the new teacher annual conference. This gives first-years teachers the opportunity to network with other beginning teachers across the state. Two, weekly intensive individualized classroom coaching sessions. These sessions are 45 minutes each and targeted to support each first-year teacher's needs. And three, aligned professional development sessions throughout the year that focus specifically on the struggles encountered by new teachers. This partnership has been crucial in supporting our first-year teachers. In contrast, we are not able to provide the same level of support for our second and third-year teachers. As we look at the data, we can see that as the intensive support drops off, so do the retention rates. This speaks volumes about the effectiveness of intentional coaching and mentorship in retaining our beginning teachers and the need to revamp support for our teachers in years two and three. We also know that the attrition rate for beginning teachers statewide increases from 8% to 13% if you're an alternative licensed person. This can be due to a variety of factors, but it includes the inability to meet all the licensure requirements from the state, including the state board exams and an extensive portfolio required that we otherwise know as the ADTPA. The North Carolina General Statute, TCED 16, outlines requirements set forth by law for beginning teacher support. NCDPI develops specific standards that drive quality, the quality of beginning teacher support programs across the state. The standards are one, systematic support for high-quality induction programs. This standard, among other things, includes a three-day pre-service for beginning teachers in their first year and 40 hours of in-service training for employees on alternative license. Standard two is mentor select, develop and support. All beginning teachers must be assigned a mentor. The mentor is selected by their principal and meets the minimum requirements outlined by the district. Mentors must complete both yearly training and conduct regularly meetings with BTEs, complete paperwork for documenting their work with their BTEs. Orange County mentors are paid a $200 minimum stipend. Standard three and four, beginning teacher professional development and mentoring for instructional excellence. Both of these standards include tiered staff development offers, offerings designed to meet the specific needs of beginning teachers. Beginning teachers should also receive the support of instructional coaches, targeted feedback for improvement and intentional instructional planning opportunities with content area experts. Standard five, formal, formative assessment of candidates and programs. Each year, districts participate in a peer review process to evaluate progress in these five standards. Once every five years, the district participates in a monitoring visit to ensure compliance with state law. All of these standards work cohesively to ensure novice teachers develop the tools required to educate students and to positively affect student achievement. We are coming in front of you tonight to ask for consideration for three recommendations to improve the quality of our beginning teacher support. The first one is to hire a beginning teacher and mentor support coordinator. The beginning teacher and mentor support coordinator will be responsible for the general supervision of the program, including professional development for BTEs, support of professional development for alternative licensure employees, oversight of mentors and keeping abreast of North Carolina's standard course of instructional and initiatives as they apply to new teachers. Hiring a beginning teacher and mentor support coordinator will increase the bandwidth to provide layered and targeted support for our teachers. The sheer increase in numbers of, of BTEs coupled with the fact that almost half of our beginning teachers come to us through non-traditional routes provides the needs for a full-time person whose responsibility is to oversight of the beginning teacher support program. The addition of this position will allow all beginning teachers to have targeted, tiered and intentional support that can have a positive effect on student outcomes. Equally as important, this position is also to provide support for mentors to hone and develop their skills. One person alone cannot support beginning teachers. This position will be responsible in making sure that our mentors, our coaches and our administrators understand best practices for supporting beginning teachers. In addition, we would like for this position to act as our National Board District contact. In numerous studies, National Board certified teachers have been shown to have positive impacts on student achievement. As I stated earlier, many of our alternative licensure employees are struggling with the state-required portfolio process known as the ADTPA. This process is very similarly aligned to the National Board certification process. Both portfolio processes are designed to collect standard-based evidence of accomplished practices. Both processes require candidates to gather, analyze and reflect on their teaching practices. By allowing this position to act as the National Board Certification contact, we, we would be supporting our experienced teachers who are interested in National Boards and building the capacity for our beginning teachers to explore National Boards in the future. Recommendation two is to revamp our existing mentors to approximately 20 lead mentors across the district. The lead mentor's role is to promote the growth and development of the beginning teacher to improve student learning. Mentors are, are critical supporters in guiding new teachers to enhance their planning, instruction and content knowledge. Mentors help orient our new teachers to our school community, teaching in general, and serve as emotional support. Currently, the district has 84 mentors. Although our mentors do a great job, there is limitations on being able to effectively train and provide support for 84 mentors. In addition, we only offer mentors a very minimum stipend for their efforts. Restructuring the program to have lead mentors will lower the number of overall mentors, but it will increase the quality of training and support. It will also allow us to pay a sizable stipend to our mentors as well as increase the accountability and skillset of these individuals. The beginning teacher mid, uh, and mentor support coordinator will be responsible for the training of the mentors and standardizing the experience for all of our beginning teachers. In addition, creating lead mentor positions serves as a growth opportunity for our individuals to learn coaching skills, mentoring skills and leadership skills that can be used to advance to other leadership roles across the district. Recommendation three is to continue with the North Carolina New Teacher Support Program in providing intensive support for alternative licensure employees. These are our teachers who did not graduate from a teacher education program. As stated previously, Orange County School has about 42% of novice teachers pursuing licensure through a non-teacher education program. Alternative routes to certification have a major impact on the teaching profession. We know that these individuals can be as effective as teachers coming through traditional routes, but they need support and that support has to be targeted and intentional. The North Carolina Teacher Support Program has the bandwidth to provide this type of intensive support for alternative licensure employees.
All right, thank you. So currently we are paying the Beginning Teacher Support Program through a combination of human capital funds as well as Title II funds. As noted in recommendation number one by Ms. Brimmer, Orange County Schools intends to hire a beginning teacher and mentor coordinator from Title II funds in an effort to preserve the BT support program in its current state, as well as add the recommendations that were listed or mentioned. Our leadership team discussed multiple creative solutions with different federal funding sources to make this happen. So our team also sought guidance from NCDPI and assurance from NCDPI that an existing position that's currently funded out of Title II funds can be shifted to Title IV funds to increase our flexibility with those Title II funds. The proposed solutions that Ms. Brimmer and I have brought forth this evening will not require an increase in funds in the budget. And I do want to reiterate that the beginning teacher and mentor support position, it will be housed in CNI and it will collaborate with human capital as necessary. It's so, so critically important that this position be well-skilled when we're thinking about teaching and learning and just best practices. But also for those skills to be leveraged and expertise to be leveraged with instructional staff and not just on the human capital side. Additionally, housing this position under the CNI lane or umbrella does not mean it will not maintain a connection with human capital as beginning teachers are navigating that critical onboarding process. So we know that that's an essential piece to that experience. So at this time, we are at a place to take questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gammon and Ms. Brimmer. Questions for them? Bonnie and then Sarah.
With a simple one, and just so I understand today, the 84 mentors that we have, how are we training them and who's supporting them? How does that work?
So at the current, sorry. At the current moment, I support the mentors. It has been a challenge. And, you know, they do perceive support and collaborate with our folks, our first-year teachers who are participating in the new teacher support program. The coaches also help with mentors and help support mentors. I think that's been critical and it's been a great partnership between the two. But currently I am supporting them. How do we do that? We have a yearly training that we call, we do it in the beginning of the year. And then every five years, each mentor has to go through a, it's called 24, 21st century mentor training. So that requirement has to be done every five years.
Okay. And, and just to clarify, I can make more money driving an activity bus to games than I can being a mentor. Right? $250? Okay.
Sarah? I have a few questions, so I'll just ask one and then we can cycle back around if we need to. Thank you for bringing this. And I think it's really important that we do some new things in how we're supporting new teachers. And I think you laid out a really good case for why. On top of that, I'd also say that the Teacher Working Condition Survey that just came out laid out some opportunities for us in doing that more effectively. So I'm really, really grateful for this. I guess my first question is just on the, the peer review process and the monitoring visit. What is, what is the timing of our next monitoring visit? You said that's every five years.
So our monitoring visit is next year.
Okay.
And again, we do do peer review every year. That's a less intensive process and we do receive recommendations from, from that that the district is asked to look at and make modifications for.
I'd love to just, I'm just curious about this kind of stuff. So someday, I did not even know that we did that peer review process. So would be interested in seeing how comes about. Will?
So one question I had is what review, what feedback are we getting from teachers that are going through the current program versus this? Because I, I assume it wasn't explicitly said here, but I would assume that our teachers are telling us it would be more effective if we got this or this or this. So do we have a process or feedback loop on this?
So the new teacher support program actually collects data for their, for, from our first-year teachers and they do it from across the state. I just had a collaboration meeting with them and I can tell you that the, the data points don't drill down to Orange County, but overall it is extremely positive. I can tell you from working with beginning teachers, however, in their first year, they absolutely feel very supportive from their coaches. It is not uncommon when they get to their second year for them to ask, do I get to see my coach? I think the feedback from second and third year is that they need more support.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So we're talking about hiring the mentor support coordinator. And then the, we have 84 mentors, but we would hire an additional 20 lead mentors?
So we would not have the 84 mentors. We would have 20 lead mentors.
Okay.
And those mentors would, would be more targeted and specific into who they serve. And so for example, I will give you, I know that we have, I can't give you the percent, but I can estimate more than 50, 60, 70% of our EC teachers are alternative licensure candidates. And so it, it, we, it would be incumbent upon us to figure out those 20 lead teacher, or mentors, who they would serve. And so it may be that, you know, we have several people to serve EC. So we would need to look at our, at our beginning teachers to determine what areas and assign them, our beginning teachers accordingly to those 20 people.
Okay, so, so currently if we have 84, they're like serving one teacher maybe, and they have a $200 stipend. And then we'd go to fewer, but they would get, they would receive more compensation for that. And they'd maybe be slightly competitive to, to be one of those lead mentors and then, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other comments? Will and then Sarah?
I, I just wanted to highlight, because you've said it a few times and it may not be translating for everybody, the alternate license is really our grow your own, which has been very successful for us, getting TAs into teacher positions. And this would help support them who hasn't gone through traditional routes.
Sarah and then Bonnie? I was going to make that point, so thank you. And then, you know, some of the things that were highlighted in the Teacher Working Condition Survey for new teachers were around beginning teachers not having a formal time to meet with their mentor during school hours, not having release time to go observe other teachers, not, opportunities not being observed as much as in some other districts by their mentor or having the opportunity to observe their mentor teacher. And so I really support the idea of strengthening and shrinking the number of mentors and giving the mentors more support. But there's also a piece here that's around release time and opportunity for mentors to meet and observe and the beginning teachers to. So how are you all addressing that side of the challenge?
That's, that's a great question. We actually had that conversation today in Cabinet. We discussed the fact that if we have lead mentors, they are going to need time to be able to meet and to observe teachers at, at their beginning teachers. And so leveraging our daily subs so that it's not an additional cost for the district is the first line of defense. It is, I can tell you that it is acceptable for substitute costs to be part of a beginning teacher budget. That's been in our budget before to provide release time. It's something we could add. But again, we do have daily subs to leverage and I do think that is an important process. We're also going to have to be really structured about how we, how we organize the time spent in terms of if you're a first-year teacher, how much time should you be spending as a lead mentor? And if you're a second-year teacher, how much time and third and so on, so that it's very laid out for our, for our lead mentors.
Bonnie?
Just really a comment. First of all, I, I like the idea of consolidating the mentors. I actually would like to see the program go even broader where I'm, and I really like the increase, you know, the increased comp for it and the slots. Where I'm choking a little bit is on the new central office position. And especially when I think about the beginning teachers and being in, first of all, I always think mentors need to be in the shoes of the people they're working with. But also, you know, between coaches and the tentacles that are coming in from central office through the, through CNI, through the coaches. And there's so many ways that, you know, I don't understand how the principal gets to really manage what's happening in his or her building. So I'm trying to understand why, why we need that central office position. I'll add one other point. As you know, we're in a pretty tight budget situation with allotments to our schools. And so I'm really struggling with adding another central office position when we don't really know how the budget is going to settle out this year.
So I'm going to let Dr. Gammon teach.
Yeah, and I, yeah, well, and I appreciate the question. I, I think it's, it's critically important to really think about across all schools, the service that a beginning teacher is going to get currently does have a lot to do with the focus of an administrative team in that building. Because there isn't necessarily a direct district support position that's just focused on that. Ms. Brimmer noted earlier that she's focused on many things, many hats, and is also trying to support that program as well. In, in my experience, I'm thinking back 14 years ago as a beginning teacher, to be assigned a mentor that A, is not in your content area, that may rarely spend quality time with you, there was not a centralized space to structure that network across schools. That did not exist in, in my experience. And so what often ends up happening is And so what often ends up happening is administrative teams get into a school year, you may intently lay out a plan for beginning teacher support, but the day-to-day business of running a school, it's very difficult for an administrator or principal or that team to be able to solely focus on that. So the, the purpose of this position would be to, to have an aligning mechanism for all schools to be aligned around that support for their BTs. It's a way to connect the central office facilitators with those BTs. And it really takes that load off of the administrative teams in the building so that they can be a point of contact and they can also be working within the school improvement goals that may be specific for that school. So I think that's why this position is essential, because what ends up happening is going from school to school or district to district, it can look different without having a consistent vision or focus. And this would be, the purpose of this position would be to tie those pieces together.
And if I could just speak to the funding source. So Title II funds can only be used for professional development. So we, we can't use those funds for allotments for schools.
I, I understand, but we could use them in school roles or move money around. I, I just, so I, I understand. I mean, I'm having, one other thing that I'm struggling with is if I go school by school, some of our schools don't really need mentors. Their grades are good, their retention's good, doesn't matter. Other schools are really struggling on all funds. So how do you manage that? And you had mentioned already EC.
So, so can I, so I will say this. We have alternative licensure and beginning teachers at almost every single school. They are very rare that there is not a beginning teacher in, in any of our schools during a current year. So that's, that's, and all beginning teachers need support regardless of how the school is doing. It is, the classroom today is challenging. It is more challenging coming out of a pandemic and that support is crucial. So going back to your original question, I like to think of this as an investment in our teachers and not a separate position, because if we don't provide beginning teacher, if we don't provide intensive support, we lose teachers. And that in itself has tremendous impacts for student achievement.
I, I just want to say also the, I think the support for teachers going for their national board certification, having that central person seems really helpful. Sarah?
I mean, part of what I, feels very important to me in having this coordinator role is strengthening the effectiveness of the mentors. So like somebody really owning that set of mentors and their role as a mentor and strengthening that so that they are then having impact with the set of three or four or five beginning teachers that they're working with. Just given the number of things that you are working on, you, you couldn't possibly like spend that amount of time with the mentors to make sure that they're really getting the most out of it. And I love the idea of that then as sort of a leadership opportunity as well and sort of developing a set of skill, coaching skills in those folks that may interest them in a coaching role later or something like that.
Let's have one more comment and then let's, let's call the vote because we have other topics. Go ahead, Will.
So one question I had is, so each of the teachers will have assigned mentors and the coordinator, and I'm very sure that things pop up in between that. So the teachers will be able to reach out to this coordinator to ask versus waiting for the next mentoring? So that would be the expectation.
And I also think that it's the fact that we, this position should live in CNI. It should live within the context of knowing our instructional programs, knowing the best practices. There's still compliance issues that, that human capital will, will take on. But having it in CNI makes it incumbent that they are in schools and that they do know what's going on in each school and what the programs are that, that we have in the structures in schools.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve this request?
Still move?
Second? Motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Gammann and Ms. Bremer.
Okay. So next, I would like to invite Mr. Ably back to the podium. And I believe he's bringing members of his team? Or maybe not. All right. So Ms. Compton, our lead nurse, will be joining Mr. Ably. And they're going to present a request for additional school nurse support for next school year.
Have we talked throughout the pandemic, the support needs of schools? Having additional staffing has been critical. We brought before you this past year, a few items to assist with that need. One of those was a contract for staffing with Metasource, which we utilized contact tracers throughout the pandemic. That contract ended this month when school ended. We also have an outside agency we contract with for staffing when school nurses are out. When there's a vacancy, we try to bring in additional staffing when we can. As you know, there certainly is a labor shortage for temporary help and it's very difficult even for them to have trained nursing staff just waiting on jobs because there are plenty of jobs open for full-time employment. And then the, the third is we utilize, obviously with the state Mako and having individuals from the state come assist with COVID testing on school campuses and, and their personnel helped and assisted with the, any of the pool testing that we did with the weekly testing. So those were three really big lifts during the pandemic. We do know right now, as we said, the Mako contract has scheduled to end with the state, but we're just not sure yet what that looks like for the fall and the amount of authorization that they will have for testing or supporting schools. We also know that we don't have the contract continuing with Metasource. And we also want to be prepared as we think about where we may be in the fall. All indications are, we will certainly see a resurgence of COVID in the fall. Has been that pattern the last two years, once schools opened back up and colleges and universities opened back up after students being home, traveling, summer programs, et cetera, that there seems to be a resurgence that we have seen with this, the waves each fall. And so what Sylvia is going to present is, you know, we don't know the unknowns, but we do know we have nurses who really for going on two and a half years now during the pandemic are very concerned about the support and what that support looks like moving forward. And as Sylvia will discuss, caseload certainly is a concern, especially at the high school level where we have one school nurse and over a thousand students on the campus. From a school safety standpoint, I will tell you, over the years, there, there's not often that individuals may go to a school nurse because of a headache or stomach ache or some other issue. And school nurses help to work with guidance counselors and social workers because students open up and talk about things that are happening or things that are going on and things that are causing them to have that headache or to have that stomach ache. And so oftentimes, school nurses can also be that first line to help identify where there may need to be additional supports provided to the student or to the family as well. So I just wanted to mention that not only do they serve an important role with all the health needs and the health components that we ask them to do, but they also are there for students who just, you know, need to talk privately with someone about their medical or other concerns. Sylvia?
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say thank you all for welcoming me into this position. You guys met me back in the fall in a similar situation, asking for help for our nurses. And I'm back again, asking for the same. The pandemic is not over. Even though we're not doing individual contact tracing, we still are required by law to report any and all communicable diseases to our local health department. So right now, with the strong schools recommendation and changes, we still do also have to notify anybody that's a potential close contact. We were doing a 2% threshold within the school setting. I know summer's here. In agreements with the health department, we will review any and all cases and will likely start doing weekly letters that we'll be sending home at this time. As you can imagine, there's no nurses over the summer. They're 10-month employees. I'm an 11-month employee. So it's very crucial and critical to have coverage for our, our summer camps right now and we're struggling with that. As well as supporting our nurses. I heard a lot of support for teachers and I in no way, shape or form want to come across disrespectful because this cannot happen without all of us as a community. I've learned a lot in the 14-plus year, or almost 14 years I've been here. And it's huge that we all work together with each other. But as nurses, we also are licensed by the Board of Nursing. And there's what we call the Nurse Practice Act that we have to follow that's law. And what we're seeing is an increase in the school nurse workload as far as nursing practice goes. We ourselves, we only have each other to support and fall on to guide with our nursing practice and to assure that we're also following guidance with the school board and the policies that are put with us that would also help dictate our nursing practice. With the tremendous call of extra work and load with COVID, as well as the numerous amount of students that's not evenly distributed without the district. So for example, an elementary nurse may have 400 students where your high school nurse at Cedar Ridge has over 1,200. Orange High School has over 1,300. And then we got to look at the student population within that school. So our special education is not evenly distributed either throughout each school. And that's not to say that the elementary nurse has an easier job than the high school nurse. Because you also have to think and reflect on what age group they are also servicing. So our little ones need a little more guidance. They need a little more time, more education when we're talking about asthma, diabetes. You know, we're definitely there to help them grow and manage those health concerns by the time they do get to high school and when they do leave us, we're hoping that they're independent with that. Then we also have staff education that is constant and continuous. You have to think about, there's no written script for a school nurse day. We don't get a lunch break. There's no scheduled time, I should say. We don't have planning periods. We don't have office hours. So whatever comes in the door is what we're seeing from the minute we get there to the minute we leave. And we may see 30 to 40 kids a day. And that does not include our children that we know are going to come to us that might need medication, might need help with diabetes, might need some extra education so we can assist in their class so the teacher can understand what's going on, either social, emotional, physical. So all of that on top of also doing, you know, the, the continuous work and reporting to our local health department, trying to keep our nurses with us. You know, our goal is definitely as well, me myself, I don't know if many of you guys know this, but I've been here almost 14 years. I started out as a licensed practical nurse, working one-on-one with an EC student. And I went back to school and I've stayed with this county that long and now I'm here. And I'm very proud of that and I'm very proud of this entire district. So we also, in our nursing department, we want to retain our current nurses. We want them to stay. We want to give them that incentive. We want to help them. You know, not only with getting these positions, we're also struggling, how competitive can we be with pay? Only a nurse can do a nurse job. Only a registered nurse can be the school nurse. Right now, you know, there is a shortage of nurses and nursing staff. Yes, we do have a contract with a company to help us when there's a nurse out, but in reality, they don't have staffing either. Or if they do, we still have to orient that nurse. School nursing is no nursing you have ever done. Just right, for example, I could not go in and do any OB nursing, okay? We just don't do that. We still need mentoring. We still need training. Yes, we know the logistics of nursing and, and our nursing practice, but being a school nurse is a lot more than just being a registered nurse. We also have, it takes a, a good three years to become proficient in what we do in any field. Requiring school nurses to come in with their national school nurse certification, that's rare. That is very, very rare. School nurses don't quit. We retire. And that's a fact. Since COVID has hit, we've been struggling. We've had, we've lost in the last two years, five nurses that resigned and five retired because the workload is just so overwhelming compared to the compensation and compared to the risk that we take with our very own license. Because again, you know, when it comes to nursing, our consequence of error is life and death. And we do this because we love it. If they don't have a competent nurse, they don't have a nurse that has time, it's, it's our student population that's suffering. Our staff need to know how to care for our kids. So with that said, and we know the contract's over, we are definitely asking for assistance with a full-time, 11-month school nurse position. That nurse, we would, we would hope to be a student support service nurse slash school float nurse so they can help us with our students with the 504 plans, health plans, IEP plans, can float to other schools, mentor our other school nurses. We have seven new school nurses to our school district. Right now, as the lead nurse, I'm the only one that has availability to go to these sites. It's nearly impossible. So that would help us. Our two permanent full-time, 12-month communicable disease certified nursing assistants, we would want them to be nurse extenders. They would be housed in the high schools to assist the high school nurse as well as take on the role of the communicable disease. And that could be any communicable disease. Right now, it's COVID. But they would be also the primary person that would contact the health department and communicate as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Compton and Mr. Ably. I know we're going to have questions for you. Go ahead, Mr. Ably.
I just wanted to quickly say, this slide deck here is updated from Symbly. The one permanent full-time is an 11-month school nurse. And then the two permanent 12-month are CNAs. And so I did want to recognize if you're approving the staffing, it would be based on what you see before you hear in the slide deck.
Okay. Questions or comments? You go.
So I, I do understand the need. And my concern is, I, I know the recommendation is to go to the county commissioners to get this funding. If they do not fund, it really has to come back and us to talk about it in the overall picture of all the other things that we have that we talked about in Budget Committee that are competing for this, this money that would be reoccurring. So I personally would be very supportive of requesting the funding through the county commissioners, but if it doesn't go through, that it comes back in the bigger picture of all the reoccurring fundings that we're looking at for next year.
Okay. Other comments? Sarah?
Yeah. I mean, I, I also am very supportive. I definitely hear the need for this. And I have not heard of us going back to the county commissioners and asking, but this is certainly a, a good case for it. I think I would, my, my concern was what I saw in Symbly about potentially going to fund balance then for this. Just adding on to Will's point here, if we think that the CNAs and the, the 11-month nurse in particular need to be permanent positions, I would be concerned about funding that out of fund balance. And $200,000 out of fund balance right now. My understanding is we're pretty close to, we, we don't have a lot of wiggle room even in fund balance to be able to spend that kind of money.
Yes. And you're exactly right. The public may not realize that school nurses are funded directly from the Board of, there are two areas. One of those is our school resource officers. The second is our school nurses are funded directly, one nurse per building from the Board of County Commissioners. And that had been the model for many, many years. What we want to address is that model no longer can support the school health and safety and nursing needs of schools today. We will also be meeting with the Orange County Health Director and just making sure that we, we help clarify what those current needs are in order for school nurses on the campus. Because one nurse per building 20 years ago was a different outlook on what the requirements were for schools when it comes to the number of immunizations alone, the health assessments, health records, and the medical plans that are now in place, the diabetes plans. There's so many more requirements. When I started over 20 years ago in public education, that were not a requirement for school nurses or schools. And so the workload of, of the nurses, the one per building, just may not be the model. But we do agree, this is a, an expansion item and that we are funding for school nurseries, nurses through the county commissioners. And we would ask that we, we use that as a first resort. We're certainly, we'll be looking for grants or other funding and certainly, you know, requesting any assistance from the state that would be able to assist with this as well. But certainly, you're right. I mean, there has to be an adjustment to either utilize fund balance or to look at other operating expenses that wouldn't occur so that this could occur. Because you all, I know, are in a very tough position and still not knowing our final allocations from the county. Plus, as was discussed in the Budget Committee, there's other concerns of, of things that may happen in the state with employee salaries. I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues or, or the board, but certainly there could be other changes at the state levels that would be requirements of the local to pick up additional dollars. dollars next year that aren't budgeted at this time, so we recognize that.
Bonnie, go ahead.
So I'm ready to make the motion then.
Okay. I need to ask a couple of questions before that, actually.
Okay. So let me, let me ask one question, if you don't mind. I understand the two permanent 12-month, actually, I like the idea of a second nurse in a thousand or 1,500-person high school. I understand the floater nurse, because we've had that before, and then we have Ms. Compton, of course, as the lead nurse. What is the role of the 11th-month school nurse?
So, we've got a couple breakdowns here. So the, what, you're talking about the one permanent full-time, 11-month school nurse?
Yeah, that one I don't.
That would be utilized as a float nurse right now. So when we have nurses that are out, we have nursing vacancies, we have additional needs at schools, either cases, clusters, there's an influx of students who need additional review of immunizations, caseload, health plans, that float nurse then floats to that loc, it's not assigned, but they're, they're school-based, they would float to that location to assist outside of the high schools.
So you're saying there's two float nurses, is it 10-month and 11-month?
Yes, the temporary one at the bottom, that is strictly temporary, and that, that's primarily helped us with COVID. And we would anticipate that that full-time, 10-month district float nurse is temporary, and it would not be something that we would continue after the next school year.
Okay. Thank you. I had a couple questions. So the, with the contracts ending like with Medasource, that's where the CNA support would be kind of a replacement. So that funding though too, like the funding source for that, I guess that was something we had approved from fund balance as well, wasn't it? We didn't have like ESAR dollars or something?
We, we did use ESAR dollars last year for supporting that contract and that work.
Okay. And then I'm just curious, because we're talking about like expanding numbers of positions, but we have had, don't we have some longstanding vacancies as well at this point? I'm just curious how, how we're doing filling vacancies that we already have.
So absolutely, yes. We've had Orange High School that's been open since the nurse retired, and this is going to be part of, when we talk to the county commissioners, there's some other things on the agenda as far as funding, we would like to talk about incoming. So the answer is yes. But we're, we're, it is on the agenda to discuss.
Well, because I know we had done some like retention bonuses for our, you know, we had real difficulty keeping nurses filling vacancies, you know, since the beginning of the school year, and I know, where are we with those bonuses? I don't remember the status of them at this point. Are there any?
They're still available.
They're still available.
Yeah. The, the big issue is salary. The competitiveness of salary.
Okay. Okay, so, so if, I know Bonnie said she's ready to make the motion, I just want to have clarity over what, and Sarah has a question, I want to have clarity over what we would be voting on to Will's point, because part of the most, the request is that we seek funding from the county commissioners. But go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you all are in communication with Chapel Hill as well? I think you have a really good case here for, to the county for increasing just like the basic level of nursing support that they provide for our schools with the CNAs and the floater. And I imagine they would want to do something equivalent with Chapel Hill, so are you all talking to them as well?
Yes, and, and we do recognize, you know, because Chapel Hill does have local dollars as well, one of the areas that they're, they currently have a school nurses for their pre-K programs, and we do not have separate pre-K nurses or funding for a pre-K nurse. That is also areas that our school nurses work and support and assist with.
I just think it might go best if we go to them together as the two districts, presumably their high schools could also use an additional CNA support.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so, I'm ready for a motion. And Will, are you, you look like you want to help clarify what it is.
All, all I would say for the motion is a motion to approve to go to the county commissioners to request funding for these positions.
Second.
And I'd like to just make a friendly amendment, and that's if they don't approve it, it comes back to the board.
That's the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion from Will and a second from Sarah, and all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Much, you all.
All right. Ms. Ably, if you could stay at the podium, please? Okay, well, before policy, are we doing our other topics?
You remember the topic, you said put it before policy?
Yes, and that would be.
That's him?
Awesome, great. Thank you, Dr. Felder.
Bring your blanket, just camp out there.
Did you need Mr. Albert to join?
Sure.
So Director of Transportation, Mr. Larry Albert.
I was just trying to figure out which one we were doing first, so. All right, so we'll, we'll talk about the school bus fuel purchase contract. We do recognize that where we are at this point in time is still exceeding our fuel allocation for diesel fuel. As we outlined in your abstract several months ago in February, we were paying $2.93 per gallon on state contract for diesel fuel. In early May, we brought a proposal to you for approval for additional purchase authorization. Diesel at that time was $4.75 per gallon, and now we surpass $4.98 per gallon for diesel fuel. So we have exhausted all of our current funding for fuel, and we still have a shortfall at this time of approximately $322,000 for fuel in order to meet the end-of-the-year balancing of the fuel contracts that we would have in place. We also recognize that this board will be meeting again in two weeks, but then not be meeting over the summer months for approving contracts. We know, starting July 1, we're going to need fuel contracts for the next school year. That purchase amount we're bringing tonight for your approval, but that purchase amount will come from our state transportation funding. We're not asking for any funding, because July 1, we will have our new funding for next school year, and we will just start that purchase authorization based on those funds. So this evening, we're bringing both for you for approval, because they're over the purchase limit thresholds, but it would require an additional appropriation for the $322,000 that we're anticipating needed at this point in time. And I'm not sure if Ms. Rath wants to address any of your financial questions, because she would be the best person to be able to help us with that.
Yes, so the, the reason I requested to pull this is I know at the county commissioners' meeting, when they were asking about our fund balance and where we were, we were 100K below where we're supposed to be, and now we're allocating another 322K, allocated 9K earlier for other items, and I just see a lot that's coming against the fund balance. So, one, I just wanted to understand, where will this put us on the fund balance? But I do know we have some other things that are going on as staff and such. So I know we don't have the full picture right this second, but again, that amount of money, just want some, to hear some clarity on where we are with the fund balance with this allocation. We have to do it, but where does that leave us?
Yes, so if you recall in the Board Weekly Update, I believe it was last week, we had taken a look at a projection of where we were looking that fund balance was going to come in for the end of this fiscal year. And that projection, of course, is based upon June expenditures as a projection, looking at where our spending was in previous years and identifying those things that we're aware of at this point, anticipating our final unassigned fund balance to be coming in around 2.3 million. So this additional fund balance appropriation would get us potentially down to a fund balance unassigned of 2 million. One other item that I will be looking at is all of the funds that we have received from ESAR. We have the ability to charge indirect cost. I assume everyone understands what indirect cost is, but basically, that is a rate that we're able to charge to federal grants for those programs who aren't typically charged to those grants. For example, the Finance Department takes care of all of the payroll, all of the invoice processing, but none of our salary is charged to the grant. Human Capital takes care of all of the hiring, all of the personnel issues, none of their personnel costs are charged to the grant. So as a result, they allow us to charge indirect cost to recoup some of those. My goal is to recoup as much indirect cost as we can from those ESAR funds to be able to offset any additional fuel costs that we're seeing come in as a result.
And on the, over the summer program, where we have the optional Friday, would that be covered under ESAR as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We, you know, we will utilize where we can and are, you know, within the, the legal limits of those funds to use those ESAR funds for those fuel purchases as much as we can. You know, I see this as a protection to ensure that we can continue to make sure that the fuel is there for those buses to transport those students. And, you know, I, the maximum impact that we're looking at, of course, we're bringing to you, the worst-case scenario is $300,000. But in actuality, I would hope that I could recover more than half of that from these indirect costs.
And just as a reminder, what is our, our required fund balance amount?
5.5% of our local budget, and that is roughly 2.1 million.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Sarah?
Just a quick comment, that I appreciate that you're looking at the indirect costs for ESAR, but I also know that we have plans for all the ESAR money too, so it seems like there would have to be a trade-off somewhere, probably. Yeah.
In actuality, yes, that, that is a potential as well, but the indirect costs were not factored into any of our plans at this time.
And we still have the opportunity, let's say there was a trade-off, to then, down the road, pay for that out of fund balance or something.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Yeah. Motion from Will and a second from Brenda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Great. So we have one, we have the janitorial.
So, so I understand it's just a contract extension. I do have one request that I would like to consider on this, is I saw that it was to look at doing a bid. I would like us to consider bringing this in-house and paying living wages as part of that plan when the bids come back, and see what that would take if we brought this back in-house and we owned it for all of our schools. I know originally it was done for cost reasons, and I just think if we're going to be talking about living wages, we should consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. We did make a note of that, to ask for living wage, non-living wage, and then as you all recall, several years ago, core management came through and did an assessment, both of our custodial program and maintenance program, and so we would be utilizing their, their analysis of the district as to what our internal staffing may look like in order to get our in-house cost. But yes, our plan was to bring back to the board three options. One of those would be to bring staff in-house. Option two would be two parts, with the vendor outsourced at the non-living wage and vendor outsourced at the living wage.
Excellent. Thank you.
Quick question on this one. I see that we have this, the extension, so that we have time to do the formal bidding process. Is, is the rate that we're paying for these few months of this extension higher than it was in the earlier part of the contract?
It is. There is a cost, a cost increase which we're experiencing across the board, it's not unique to janitorial services. That's why we were only recommending a three-month extension and not a six-month or a 12-month extension, to minimize the additional cost that we would be paying. But we also know schools haven't stopped. You know, we had graduation on Friday, schools ended, traditional schools ended Thursday, Hillsborough Wednesday, we had students back in buildings today. So, you know, we recognize that, that trying to switch out companies just is going to take us a little bit more time to analyze and to make sure that we recognize what our needs are going to be moving forward. And to Mr. Atherson, Atherton's point, that also includes supervisory staff or custodial services, because we do want to make sure that if it is outsourced services, that we detail the expectations for that as well, and that's a staffing issue.
Motion to approve?
Motion from Mr. Atherton, a second from Ms. Hauser, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Ms. Javeli. Okay, and now, I believe we are ready to talk about policy, and I think that Eva's going to walk us through this a little bit.
So these policies have all been through the Policy Committee, and the drafts that you see here reflect the Policy Committee's recommendations. And these were discussed over several hours, over two meetings. So you can look at, at the bottom, the supporting documents, there's a cover memo from each department reflecting the recommendations. So the first three recommended for deletion, I do want to note that, so 8425, staff recommended, and the Policy Committee agreed that this should be deleted, it's an idiosyncratic local policy that just is unnecessary. 4111, the kindergarten health assessment, the recommendation is that that information will be folded into 4110, which is also here for approval. And the Section 504 policy, 4020, is outdated, and the recommendation is that we adopt, which is here in the, below, the School Board Association updated 504 policy, which would be numbered 4020. 4022. So just wanted to clarify that, that they're not being, the information is not necessarily being deleted. So with that, I think all of these are first reading except for 3620, which is at the And so I will, I think we can just go, if there's any questions before these are passed along, just for first reading, yes.
So why is there a request to waiver the second reading of so many policies?
There's one.
Oh.
It's just one.
I think it was worded.
The wording of it makes it.
It's just one.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but the wording of it makes it sound like, and the waiving of second reading.
Right.
So, okay.
They're only asking the second reading be waived for policy 3620.
Okay.
All of the others would come back at the second June meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone have any, do you want us to just wait and maybe take one vote, or does anyone have questions about the first?
I think you, one vote for the first reading, and then a separate vote for 3620.
Okay, so the first vote would also then include the deletion of the three?
First, yeah, first reading of that.
Uh-huh. The three that we're deleting, do you want us to split separately on those? Why would there be a first reading on the deletion? Can we just motion to adopt the recommendations?
Because it has to come back for the second agreement that it's being deleted.
Yeah, I think generally.
Motion the questions.
You have a question?
Sure, go ahead, Bonnie.
First of all, it's showing policy 8101 be deleted also, so are we deleting that, or?
No, that's, those are edits.
Well, mine says delete, so I just didn't know, are we deleting 8101?
I'm looking at the memo here. Yes, that was on the finance. It's at local current expense fund balance.
I didn't bring my notes.
Yes.
That should have.
Yes, that should have been listed for deletion as well. And the reasoning there was that it's not, it seems to be a commissioner's resolution that was then adopted into policy, but it doesn't quite make sense to have it as policy. It references Chapel Hill Carvero Schools.
What's important about it is it, it puts in, answers the question that Ms. Rath gets asked every time, and that's what our fund balance percent needs to be.
It wouldn't be eliminating that requirement. We just found it, and I think staff found it odd, an odd thing to have in the policy manual.
So where would it be?
It would continue to be the local policy of the commissioners, the county commissioners, not ours.
Oh, it's not our policy?
No, it's their policy.
It's put up on us.
It still exists.
Just not in our policy manual.
Got it, got it.
It's a requirement.
The other question I had was, I understand, you know, we don't get a lot of people showing up for our budget hearings, but I like us being accountable. And I'm not sure what we want, I realize the School Board Association said to do it one way, but I would like to continue to say, we will hold public hearing, public budget hearings as opposed to we may.
Which policy are you looking at?
I'm looking, I'm sorry, 8100.
So the staff recommendation was to align that with the law, which is that budget hearings are optional, but it's obviously up to the board.
And we said at the meeting yesterday that it was a law. And we were just trying to follow the letter of the law.
Right, but policy and culture of, as you know, Orange County, we like public hearings, we like, you know, and so if, so I kind of would be inclined to leave it. And then on policy 8300, and maybe, I just don't know how the board, what the board sees. One of the statements is, "The superintendent has authorized to transfer monies from one appropriation to another within the same fund, subject to limitations and procedures that may be prescribed by board resolution or state or federal law or regulation. And any such transfers must be reported back to the board at the next recorded, at the next meeting." So the question, because the general fund is a fund, right? A hundred million dollar fund is, that's a fund. Right. So, so that, so I read it as a superintendent is allowed to move money within a fund and just tell us after the fact. And I guess I thought there were other policies that said we had to be notified. Am I, am I crazy? This is not within an account or within a departmental budget, but it says the superintendent can transfer monies from one appropriation to another within the same fund. And is that something, and I don't know what the answer is, I just don't know what we typically allow.
I, what, something I'm noticing in the, that language comes from the NCSBA model policy. And it, it references a general statute by adding that language. And so I think that's.
I understand, I'm just asking the board, you know, what, what, if that's something, is that where we are? You know, I don't know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know, but do we want more control over that? Because I know the board has wanted to approve it in the past.
Right. So they are brought to you as information in those, like, you approve the budget amendments, but the superintendent has long been authorized to make those changes. In other words, budget amendments tend to be retroactive.
Right, right, I guess I may be confusing this a little bit with some of our rules around central office and moving staff positions in central office. And so I don't know if that, how that, how this affects that. That's where I, that's kind of where I am.
Personnel is a different set of policies and requirements.
So we have a separate, so to connect, what I think you're trying to talk about is, we do have a policy that says you can't remove a position and move that funding to something else. You must bring that back to the board. That's not the same thing as this. This is talking about, I don't know, you need more money over here and you moved it over. Our checks and balances are around the people resources from the policy, I remember.
So we do it through the personnel side, not through the accounting side? Is what you're.
That's.
The HR side, yes.
Okay, all right, that was, those are my questions.
Okay, other people with questions? Okay, so setting aside the 3620 that we're doing right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of first reading for these policies that has been presented.
Second. Recommendation from Vice Chair Stevens, a second from Ms. Mackenzie, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Clarity, so Ms. Hauser requested the one-word change to may to be will. Are you including that?
No, I don't, because we talked about it yesterday in policy. And we said it was, it comes from the law. It's in, it's a letter of the law, so.
But our policy doesn't.
Then I have a clarity question to the attorney. So my understanding is we can always be more restrictive than the law. We can't be less. Is that correct?
You can. So it's, but it's like the, a majority of the board would have to decide that you want to do that. So the motion would not include that change. So I guess it's a question of where a majority wants to go. But yes, it's, I mean, you have had that in your policy before.
So does that mean we would not have a public budget hearing where people could come in and talk?
No.
Of course we're going to have budget hearings.
We're not required to.
It's just that that's the way the law states it, and so that's what the policy committee adopted. But we're going to, of course, have budget.
Always have.
And why wouldn't we put it?
Then why not leave it?
Then why wouldn't we put it if that's what we're going to do? That's the purpose of policy, is to say, we're following it and this is what we're doing. It seems like.
It really doesn't matter one way or the other to me personally.
Oh, I'm not going to withdraw my motion because we spent hours in policy yesterday talking about this. And the attorney did tell us, you know, it's the law, and we pulled it from North Carolina School Boards Association. And of course, we're not going to say, no public hearings. We're in Orange County, we know that we're going to have public hearings.
Then we should, policy should say that.
It should say it.
The policy now says we may, doesn't say we will.
Makes it optional. Future boards could decide not to do it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Two, and now we have the policy 3620. Motion to approve revisions to policy 3620 with a waiver of second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Felder, is that the end of what we need to do? Oh, no, we don't, we have, I'm so sorry.
We have one more thing.
We still have one more thing.
For 10 minutes.
We have Ms. Pitts and Mr. Avolay.
That would be correct. And so Ms. Pitts, our Director of Child Nutrition Services, and Ms. Avolay, are very familiar with, would like to present a bid for meal contracts.
So good evening, Chair Doyle, Vice Chair Stevens, board members, Dr. Felder, staff, and members of the public. It is my honor to present to you tonight information regarding Child Nutrition Services vendor contracts for the upcoming 2223 school year. Each year, Child Nutrition Services must bid or renew contracts for food and dairy products, fresh produce, chemicals, and supplies. The following vendors have agreed to renew their contracts for the upcoming school year. Pet Milk for Dairy Products, the contract total is $191,474.20. Foster Cavernous for Fresh Produce, total contract is $37,849.45. These contracts will be renewal one of the four-year renewal option per the original contract. New contracts for the upcoming school year include Cisco Raleigh for Food Products. The total contract will be $1,025,386.38. And Cisco of Raleigh for Supplies and Chemicals with a total contract of $222,492.56. Both of these contracts will include an option of up to four one-year additional annual contract renewals. So these contracts are essential as they provide the necessary food products and supplies needed for our dedicated staff to serve nutritious meals to our students. Some fun facts regarding the volume of food and resources included in these contracts. Per this year, the Child Nutrition Services this year with these contracts served 8,000, or sorry, 856,143 meals. So in the 2122 school year, that's what we served.
Could you say that number one more time?
It's 8,000, or 856,143.
Thank you.
This included the usage of 4,764 gallons of milk. 42,940 oranges, just to give you an idea of the amount of fresh fruit we go through. And here's the kicker, 12,600 pounds of beef patties.
Wow.
So as a reference, that's the size of an elephant. I mean, that's the weight of an elephant.
Just one elephant.
I thought you'd appreciate that at 9:30 at night. So the recommendation is for the Board of Education to enter into renewal contracts with Foster Cavernous and Pet Milk with the option of three additional annual renewals, and also to enter into contracts with Cisco Raleigh with the option of four additional annual renewals.
Motion to approve. Hold on, did you have something you wanted to ask about, Sarah?
I did, I was curious how these prices compare to previous contracts.
So with the renewals, we just had a tiny increase. I mean, we've seen a little fluctuation in those prices, but they have essentially stayed the same. Our milk price goes up and down market value, so it has stayed, it has gone up, but it's stayed relatively normal. Same thing with our fresh fruits and veggies, we're seeing an increase in those. The increase has been with the Cisco Raleigh contract. They opted to not renew, and we had to go back to a bid. Market value, because a lot of these items go through manufacturer guaranteed pricing, so those are definitely up, and we've seen increase in some of our staples.
You have a sense of like ballpark how much they're up?
I believe our contract for this year was around $845,000. And next year, we're over a million. Now, keep in mind, we added a couple additional items that were probably a little more expensive due to interest with, you know, our students and some of the things that they've tasted and getting feedback from them what they're interested in. But we're looking at going up from 845 to over a million.
Yeah, the question I have is similar to Sarah's is, if the state does go back to charging, do we know how much the meal prices will increase based on this?
We took that, I think, a month or two ago when you voted on it. They're staying the same this year.
Okay.
So yes, we'll have to, unfortunately, due to the paid lunch equity, we'll have to look at it increase next year. But this year, the board voted to keep prices the same.
And Bonnie?
That was my question.
Okay, great, we're right at 9:30. There aren't future question, or further questions. Ms. Mackenzie?
A motion's on the table.
All right.
Second, well, that was the discussion part of the motion, right? Second, just even.
Okay, motion from Ms. Mackenzie, a second from Vice Chair Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Ms. Pitts. Sorry you had to wait so late this evening.
Keep thinking about elephants.
Okay, and we actually have to return to closed session. So do I have a motion to return to closed session pursuant to the statement I read earlier this evening? Second, motion from Stevens and a second from Ms. Riley, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.